And, uh, thank you so much for being here and welcome to our city council meeting this evening, uh, on this November 1st. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Feis.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pleasure this evening will be led by at-large council member Sharon Jewen.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, whoops, excuse me, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. The amendment's being to pull two items from the consent agenda. One being B1D to be considered after the consent agenda. It's a motion approving a travel request for Waterloo Police Department staff, civilian and sworn, to Waterloo, Iowa on December 8th, 14th, and 20th, 2021, for training titled "The Journey, The Joy, and The Job of Racial Justice", and amount not to exceed 15,000. The second item to be removed from the consent agenda is item 1B4 to be considered after the comment, after the consent agenda. Motion approving change order number 22 with Cardinal Construction, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, for a net increase of $5,803 in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center addition and renovation project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Move to approve that as amended in the minutes of the October 18th, 2021 meeting as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Uh, first item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring the first week of November 2021 as Women's Lung Cancer Awareness Week. So, please let me, let me read that. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States and in Waterloo in 2021, accounting for more deaths than breast cancer, ovarian, and cervical cancer combined. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 59%, yet only 17% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. Whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality rate by 20% when compared to screening by chest x-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, and by 2035, it is estimated that more women will die from lung cancer than men. Whereas the incident of lung cancer is higher among young women when compared to young men in the U.S., whereas women are more likely than men to be younger and to have never smoked at the time of lung cancer diagnosis. And whereas the current United States Preventative Services Task Force Lung Screening Guidelines preclude screening of many high-risk women, and additional research is needed to better understand the differences in the epidemiology of lung cancer between men and women. And whereas organizations working in the Waterloo community such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and the Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to educating about women's lung cancer and lung cancer screening, and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Iowa. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, uh, Mayor of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the first week of November 2021 as Women's Lung Cancer Awareness Week, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encouraging all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. And so, I know for a lot of us out there, uh, this is personal on so many levels, and, uh, it's one that's near and dear to, uh, my grandmother as well, who, uh, is no longer with us. So, make sure you heed the word, early detection is most important, uh, and you take the necessary precautions to get screening. All right, it is now time for oral presentations. It's your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Uh, there are three speakers that have already, um, registered to speak this evening, and the first speaker we have listed is Ms. Teri Stevenson, I believe. Ms. Stevenson, are you here? Yes, ma'am. Please, um, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, uh, and let us know what's on your, let us know what's on your mind.
First of all, I'd like to preface my remarks with this one statement. All understanding precedes justice. Waterloo continues to be a city divided by class, race, culture, and economics. We have extremely, we have an extremely long way to go before race relations are advanced to a state of equality for all citizens. Before we can be included as part of the growth and development and advancement of this city, we must be respected and allowed to sit at any and all tables where our best interests are being contemplated. Systemic racism, structural racism are a big part of the reason we remain in the situation we find ourselves today. Today's buzzwords, multiculturalism, diversity, equity, inclusion, economic, and social justice, are coupled with a variety of mission, vision, and inclusion statements declaring freedom, justice, and equality for all people. However, they are just smokescreens used by the powers that be in order to keep people of color and poor people powerless. It won't work if we wait for change. We must use our power to attain change. These doctrines are without merit if you can still fit, still visit governmental, educational, public and private work environments where there are few if any people of color in regular to top management positions. These politically correct words mean nothing if our neighborhoods continue to decline while the rest of the city is growing by leaps and bounds. They mean nothing if students of color continue to receive disproportionate amounts of disciplines, referrals, and suspensions from our schools, and if they are not in high-level classes in significant numbers. Some would have you believe Waterloo's continuing decline, especially on the east side, began with Mayor Hart. That is simply not the truth. The city has been using the A.G.O.'s strategy of divide and conquer for its entire existence. That strategy is being pushed by some because it has been successful in containing, controlling, and directing communities of color. White flight, dilapidated housing, blighted neighborhoods, east-side school closures where our children have to get up early in the morning, in the cold, take buses halfway across the city. They're forced to rise early, that they have to travel the great distances, and they are potential targets increasingly for abductions. Once they get to school, they're harassed for being late. On the other hand, Caucasian students have the freedom to remain in their own safe, secure beds in their neighborhood, sleep late, and be chauffeured to school without any of those worries. Back to Blue is an effort to broaden the already too-deep division between some members of predominantly Caucasian communities and some members of Black and Brown communities. If citizens of Waterloo do not want this division, if citizens of Waterloo want a safe, fair, progressive city to reside in, we cannot fall to this campaign. We should not and cannot afford to vote along color lines. Our votes must be used wisely. This onslaught of constant criticism of Police Chief Fitzgerald is a disgrace, but it is not an abnormality. National law enforcement statistics indicate considerable dissension in departments where large numbers of Caucasian officers are required to take orders from Black and Brown police chiefs. It appears to me and others that Chief Fitzgerald is striving to create a more professional and better-run department where officers are held responsible for their actions, which include being on the streets instead of sitting in the office, often confirming the stereotype of eating donuts and drinking coffee. If patrol cars are computerized, why can't officers complete their reports while in their cars? A street presence without harassment would certainly discourage crime and would also decrease tax dollars. Reportedly, there are only two Black officers, two Indigenous or so-called Latino officers, and one Asian officer. This might explain why many Caucasian officers could use training on their people skills when interacting with people of color throughout this community. The entire Black and Blue campaign is a code word to support the police under all circumstances at all costs. I have no problem supporting police officers who are dedicated, well-trained, community-oriented, and not racist. Don't think many other citizens do either. I do have a problem with police who are indifferent, hostile, rude, power-seeking, bigots, who use their badges to intimidate and harass citizens. I need to continue. I've come here before and always stayed within my time, but I would like to continue.
Miss, if, um, we'll give you about 30 seconds, just.
30 seconds, let me find the best.
All right.
On this council is a woman who consistently attacks the mayor, misrepresents her statements, and frequently creates discord. In my estimation, the councilwoman is dishonest and is suspect, seeking to elevate herself, as Malcolm X would say, "by any means necessary". Members of this city council are sworn to work in and for the protection of the citizens of Waterloo. I personally think she has deep-seated issues based on color. Black mayor, Black Director of Human Resources, Black Director of Human Rights Commission, Black Director of Community Development, and perhaps more importantly, a Black police chief. Her signature statement, "If it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, then it's a duck", tells her whole story. I submit to you that if a racist speaks like a racist and behaves like a racist, then the individual is a racist. If the citizens of Waterloo want to change our ranking from 24/7 reports and other reports, then let's change the city. Mayor Hart is not responsible for the feelings of this city. As a city's ambassador, he's attempting to remedy situations he inherited from several mayors before him. In all actuality, Waterloo has not been at its best for decades. So, let's stop playing the game and come together for the betterment of Waterloo.
Philip Oldtrogge.
Uh, Mr. Oldtrogge, are you in the audience?
Yes.
Yes, please come and state your name and address for the record.
Philip Oldtrogge, 814 West Second Street. I'm gonna switch gears and talk about streets. The Ridgeway reconstruction, which I understand is gonna happen in 2022. I first became aware of the potential plan by reading the Waterloo Courier, and one can very much agree that it is a major east-west connecting street to Cedar Falls. It was one of the only two non-highways that connect Waterloo to Cedar Falls. During the construction of University Avenue, it became the only option other than Highway 20 or 218. It is imperative to keep Ridgway four-lane road from Kimball to Highway 63, and it should be widened to the standard width for the four lanes. My final statement is, if you have any plan to revert this back to single lanes with the center-turn lane, I believe you will be turning this city backwards 50 or 60 years when single-lane roads were commonplace.
Thank you, sir. Jamie, do we, Ridgway, are you going in single lanes, or? Can you, uh, state that for the record?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. It is on, Ridgway is on next year for an overlay between Kimball and Ainsborough, and it's going to remain four lanes like it is today.
All right, thank you. Uh, our next speaker, Sherri Gable. Are you, are you here, Ms. Gable?
Uh, handout, someone would be willing to disperse them.
Sherri Gable, 5118 South Fork Lane, Waterloo. Want to switch topics to TIFs? The handout, and I apologize to the audience that you don't have a handout. Tips on TIFs. What is a TIF? How many people could tell me what T-I-F stands for? Raise your hand if you know what a T-I-F, the letters T-I-F stand for. Okay. Uh, first lesson is a TIF is a tax increment financing to a private developer. Okay, so, uh, the paragraph says, "When the city or county or the board of supervisors, or in this case, the council, grants the TIF grants, tax increment financing, borrows money from the bond market in the form of a TIF bond." So, you buy bonds. The borrowing money is given to the developer to build the housing, commercial building, or industrial building. The TIF bond loan interest are paid with the developer's property taxes. Once the TIF bond has been paid, the developer owns the building, even though tax money was used to pay the loan and interest. This is equivalent of a gift, a grant, or welfare payment. In other words, they do not have to pay back the money that they never paid in the beginning. So, we have a comparison here. On the left-hand side, there's seven steps when you pay property taxes. What happens to the money? You get a tax bill. The entire property is designated at the base. So, if you have a $100,000 house, you pay taxes on a $100,000 house. Compare that to a TIF grant. On a TIF grant, it's divided into two pieces. You have a base, and you have an increment tax. You only pay tax on the base. So, the base could be a bare lot. So, if you keep a bare lot long enough, you're gonna keep your taxes down because that's a minimum payment. Number two, the property tax is paid to the county treasurer. Same thing for the TIF fund. It's paid to the county treasurer. Number three, all the property taxes will be distributed to public entities if you are a regular taxpayer. However, if you have a TIF grant, the party's only two, pay two types of parts. You only pay taxes on the base and not on the increment. The county treasurer distributes the property taxes to the city, the county, the school district, community college, agricultural extension, and other public entities if you are a regular taxpayer. But if you have a TIF grant, the property tax is collected on the, are only on the base. So, that means you don't have to pay the whole tax bill. So, if you go to a gas station and you buy $10 worth of gas, what that means? If, uh, you have $10, you only have to, and you have a 50% increment, tax increment, you only have to pay $5, but the bill's $10. Who's gonna pay the other $5? We are. The other taxpayers are going to pick up that $5. The developer will never have to pay that back. Increment means that they're gonna pay a little more each year on the base, but if they have a 20-year tax increment base, they don't have to pay the full thing until 20 years later. So, why can't we use the money initially? Why do we have to wait 20 years? What's it gonna be worth in 20 years? Is it gonna be around? Is it gonna be a viable business? We don't know. So, the county treasurer pays this, the school district gets the money, the property taxes, and the board, uh, issue the TIF. The city or county pays the taxes on the increment for the bond. The public does not receive the tax money to use for schools. Schools don't get it. Fire doesn't get it. Streets don't get it. Any of the public services are paid for with property taxes. Whose property taxes? Ours. Ours. Not theirs, not the developer. Ours. Okay, number six. Number seven, the treasurer of the State of Iowa replaces some of the tax money that was diverted from the school district. However, that may not make it completely reimburse the school district. So, where's that money gonna come from? Raising taxes. Whose taxes? Our taxes. Everyone's taxes, not just the developer. So, at the end of the 20 years, the developer gets the land. They do not have to make up for the tax money that the, that the public has given them for the 20 years, or 10 years, or 15 years, or whatever years it is. It goes to zero. They get to keep the property without having to reimburse the public for the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. No, do you want to comment a little bit? You don't have the sheet, but, um, just, um, I don't know, just about TIF, you know, debt service, utility payments that go into, uh, but.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I mean, there's a lot of more details.
And thank you for your presentation, Ms. Gable.
Yes. There's a lot more details we could talk about with the TIF. Um, you know, number one, it doesn't just go to pay for private development. We also are able to utilize, um, funds in a TIF district to do public improvements, such as creating lots, such as extending sewer, water, um, road infrastructure to draw businesses here. Um, the property, the, the private developers do pay taxes. Um, the city of Waterloo generally uses tax rebate, so they'd still pay their full taxes. If there is a percentage of rebates given for a limited amount of time, they would get a percentage back, um, but that doesn't last for the full, um, their, their full existence. It could be five years of 50%. It could be a different amount based on the, the size and project and the amount of infrastructure that we're putting in. In terms of the base only, so the base is set in a TIF district, so those taxes continue to get divided up to the county, to the city, um, and to the school system. The new increment that's created, um, there's still a portion that goes to debt service, which goes to the schools, it goes to the county. And by the way, anytime we, we create a TIF district, of course, we coordinate meetings with the school system, the county, to see if they are, are for it or against it. Um, they've always been for it because they see the, the ability to grow business development, um, and businesses in the area. But, um, there's still a portion of debt service that goes to them. The, the majority of the, the increment area, though, does go to the city to pay back debt in the TIF district. So, it's not that the city can just hold on to that money. It is to specifically pay back debt, which may be for infrastructure, for roads, water, and sewer. The 20-year timelines for TIFs are put in place, um, kinda like your mortgage. Um, you're, you're doing some larger projects, you need some time to pay it back. So, the 20-year timeline is there by the state code. The city of Waterloo has released areas from the TIFs once the bond, once the debt has been paid in the Northeast Industrial Park area, in the Martin Road area, and in the San Martin area. So, again, we're using TIFs to get projects to happen now, paying them back our, our debt for the infrastructure and, and business incentives over time, and then releasing them back into the general fund to help keep property taxes down in the long run. And again, with that debt service portion always being paid off year after year, that also helps keep the, the general levy down as well.
Thank you. All right, that is a, um, that is our three speakers that have, uh, registered to be able to speak at this time. Uh, if you'd like to address the council, uh, and mayor, or department heads on issues, please come up, state your name and address for the record, uh, and you have three minutes.
My name's Dwayne Hunter, 1205 and a half Bishop Street. I'm here also to talk about the taxes he said they need to pay back. Well, if you didn't bond everything, make the taxpayers liable for taxes, we wouldn't need to pay it back. We gotta do this. We gotta charge the, all the citizens of Waterloo are being taxed to death by you guys up here. You got 200 pieces of property the city owns. Controls should be sold at auction and put back on a tax roll. Why aren't they done? Why isn't something done for that? You don't sell them, you give them to one person for a dollar, and you charge the next one whatever you can get out of them. You're taxing the citizens of Waterloo to death. We're tired of more water, more sewer, more drain-off water, more property tax, more taxes, all the way around. Why? So that you guys can have a big job, and I'm looking at the mayor. The mayor wants the big job. He got $150,000 to get voted in this year from outside interest, being us being taxed to death. That's what we're getting. You got a bad place to live, a lot of people are leaving Waterloo. Blackaw County, why? Too many taxes. Tax, now you got a 70 thou, or 70 million bond coming up for. Tax, now you've got a seventy thou, or seventy million bond coming up for the fiber system? Who's going to pay for that? Some other fund? The other fund that you mentioned should have been lower in our property taxes. All the way around. Landlords in Waterloo, wake up, you're being taxed to death, right along with the citizens. You're being taxed to death because nobody's cutting none. And, oh, we're going to do big favors for big corporations, like the theme parks. You're going to give them fourteen million dollars? And who's going to pay for that? Us taxpayers. How many other people are you going to give a big million-dollar exemptions for? One right after another. You're going to give out money to the big boys and tax us citizens. So as I stated once before, all my properties are up for sale. After eighty years, I'm going to sell everything. I was born here, raised here, and here most of my life. It's time to leave.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ilers. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council or the mayor?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. First off, I'd like to have, uh, number seven on the consent agenda removed for further discussion. And my other comment is, uh, let's keep this meeting to the agenda items only. Voting's tomorrow. What's your opinion then? We, this is the people's house for conducting the people's business. Let's keep it to that. Um, I just, this is not the stumping position. This is the time to conduct the people's business. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dryer.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.-
Just for clarity, is that one A7 or one B7?
Mr. Dryer, is that, uh, one A7 or one B7?
Move back, please.
What'd he say?
Yes, for a minute.
A7.
A7?
A7.
A7, one A7.
The, uh, setting the date of public hearing? All right, you got it. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening or mayor?
Helen Seenster, uh, 4040 Homer Street. Helen Seenster, 4040 Homer Street, Waterloo, Iowa. When I was up here before, I was really upset. I'm still upset, but I, I, I feel there's hope. Because when I looked in the papers and I heard, uh, some of the things that our mayor has been doing in this town, it was just, uh, I was just elated. Because I, knowing some things had been happening, I didn't realize so much had been happening. And the same thing with our chief of police. I think it was just awesome to read and see what had been taking place in the past year or so. Then the thing that bothered me was someone sent a flyer to my house, and I was totally upset. It had the mayor's picture on there, and it said something about, um, failure and, uh, and had something about failed. Uh, and I meant to bring it tonight, but that disgusted me. And then I saw the back part, and it had something about, I think, the Griffin or something. Again, I am a native of Waterloo. I love this community. I've invested in this community. I've worked with most of you that are on the council here. I'm an entrepreneur. I've invested. I've had most of my schooling, except for my doctorate's been out of state. I don't appreciate the tactics that have been used by our leaders. To me, it's, it's just terrible. And I just want you to know that the people here tonight support our mayor, our chief. And can we just stand those that support? And there's a lot more, but they could not be here because of jobs and things like that. But I think we need to come together and build some bridges and quit building walls.
All right, thank you. All right, um, I think, um, I think we are ready for council comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. Um, I brought up at a, at a previous meeting that I would like to see an independent body, um, brought into the city to evaluate morale issues. And I, I truly believe that we need to do it citywide, starting with the police department. We, they can meet with department heads and, and the rank-and-file officers, and maybe come up with some, some areas that, that we can, uh, improve morale and, and improve the status of the police department. But I think that, I don't want it to stop there. I'd like it to, to be citywide for all departments, because I think it would be a, a great learning experience for us, number one. And number two, our city employers are one of our most valuable assets that we have working for the city. So I'd really like to see that. Um, I, last year at the CIP, uh, discussions, I had made the comment that I'd like to see two council people be placed on the CIP committee. And I'm still putting in that request again. Uh, I, I think that, uh, council input would be important, because a lot of times, we don't really see the CIP finished product until it's presented to council to be voted on. Uh, last year, Mr. Morrissey and I were the two people that attended all the CIP meetings, and each meeting we, we went to, we got another re, uh, revision. And it constantly was in a state of flux and change, and, and so I, I think that would help the process. And I would, I, and the next thing I'd like to do is, is, uh, I brought this up when, when we had the Dollar General conversation on Shawless, that, uh, that we create an overlay district. An overlay district from, on, on Shawless, from, uh, Dyzer Road to Hess, from Hess Road to La Porte, and La Porte Road to Hawthorne. And I think that's important to have an overlay district, uh, so that, that we can encourage the type of businesses that we want to support, uh, the, the growth that we have in, in that area. Then I had a couple of questions for, for Jamie, uh, and it had to do with, uh, the Dyzer-Shawless road intersection and, and the paving. And I, I know they're, they're working hard, but we're going to be running out of, of good days to pave. And if at all possible, if they could just open up that, pave that Dyzer-Shawless intersection first, and get that intersection opened up, because if, if it doesn't get opened up this year, we'll be going into four construction seasons that Dyzer's been closed or partially closed. And it, and it's, it's really hard on the people that live south of, of 218. Uh, so I, I guess I didn't relate a comment, I, I just would, would request that. And then, uh, the other thing was, two, two weeks ago, I asked, uh, about, uh, the contractor cleaning up the sealer spilled by the Sportsplex sidewalk. And that's another concern of mine, because it's still there, and we're running out of good days to get it done. And the longer we wait, the harder it's going to be to, to get that sealer off. So I would, I would, uh, uh, hope that they would be working on that. The other issue is, is I think, I believe that contractor that was working there has a bunch of his materials sitting in the Sportsplex parking lot off of West Third Street. And we're going to be getting into snow removal season, so that they could do something with that. I also would like to request and, and ask when, if someone could tell us when the last time we had a grout update for the, for the council. And I think they're supposed to be giving us an update once or twice a year, but I would hope that they would be coming soon. What? The grout-
Grout?
-update. That, that, I think that's, is it once or twice a year, sir? Do you know?
Is it once or twice a year? I know, for one for sure, twice.
But I, I would just-
Mr. Mayor, it's two times a year.
Okay. And I, I would appreciate one coming up if, if possible. And, and then the, uh, the last thing I want to say is, I, I want to, I would personally like to thank every person that put themselves out to run for office this year. You know, everyone knows the election's tomorrow, and if you don't, you must live under a rock, because it's, it's, it's been, it's been front and center. And I, I appreciate what everyone has done, and, and the ability to put themselves and their families and their background and, and everything on the line. I think this is a record number of forums and debates that we've ever had. I mean, what'd we have for council? Five? It was a lot, it was a lot for, for people. And so I, I just want to thank those people, uh, for running. I, I appreciate it. Uh, if you haven't voted already, please remember to get out and vote. Vote for the candidates that, that best serve your, your, your visions of how you want Waterloo to be. And so, please get out and vote. Please vote for the people that, that you want, that you support because of their vision and how they serve Waterloo. And, uh, and hopefully, uh, we'll have a very productive day after, after tomorrow. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback off of my colleague, um, Mr. Bozen. Elections have consequences, uh, and I know some like to make that my catchphrase, but it's true. Um, and tomorrow is the last day of voting. Um, and so it is incredibly important for all of the citizens, us up here included, to make our voices heard, because as we were told, this is the people's house. And the decisions that we make up here, but ultimately, they are decisions about vision and about whether Waterloo moves forward, or if Waterloo only appeals to those of a certain brand. I know how I'll be voting. I encourage you all to vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Well, um, first of all, I'd like to ask your indulgence, and you're granting me the time to finish my prepared statement. If I could, and I'd beg the indulgence of the council to do that, because it may take a little, little time more than what Mr. Bozen had brought up or anything like that. But I have prepared statement, and I'd like to be able to finish it in its entirety, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And council, if I could get your indulgence to so do. Okay. Well, uh, first of all, I would like to say that, uh, last Wednesday, October 22nd, I got to listen to and participate in two very, uh, informative webinars. One was on stormwater issues, with the second entitled Vision Zero. And Vision Zero has been adopted in various communities around the U.S., with the goal being to set your sights through strategies developed by the community, uh, and the leaders of that community to have zero traffic fatalities, whether it be vehicular, pedestrian, or bicycling. And I thank Danita Gadsden for allowing me, uh, to be part of that discussion. I do hope that our city's, uh, next council with the mayor will take up both of these issues, as each has potential positive ramifications for the residents of Waterloo. Uh, secondly, I just want to say that, uh, I have, uh, been able to review about two-thirds of Chief Joel Fitzgerald's strategic plan for Waterloo PD, uh, for five years. And I am amazed at the in-depth, uh, manner in which he, uh, went into the various topics. And I've been on council for eight years, but I have never seen such a document at this. And I, uh, thank Chief Fitzgerald for doing that. I commend him for it in its entirety and totality. Um, and the third thing that I want to do is, uh, sort of difficult, but it's also something that I feel that I have to do at this time. Free speech is a constitutional right, which carries with it a responsibility in order for our society to remain a free democracy. A republic where the people elect representatives of their choosing to make decisions for the good of all, for everyone, not just the chosen few. Free speech means that we speak honestly, openly, and without half-truths, deceit, or intentionally misleading statements. As a councilman, I'd only took an oath to uphold the U.S. and Iowa constitutions, as well as laws codified by our city, to follow policies set up by our city. This includes speaking in ways that enhance and in no way damage our city's reputation, standing, and our image to those both within and outside our city. With that, this council rewrote our rules of procedure. They passed last December 14th, uh, of, of 2020. Needless to say, my last four years on council have definitely been different than the first four. Never did I, other council members, I might say, or opinion, and the public expect to be exposed to the many, in my opinion, egregious statements, actions, and misleading, false, or deceitful accusations spewed from the mouth of one of our council members. I have had it. Enough is enough. Looking into a camera, smiling. Please allow me to finish, because it'd be a while. Looking into a camera, smiling, and referring to oneself as bringing kindness, gentleness, and accountability is one thing said to a camera audience. But when that same person's actions are contrary and harm our city's image is another and violates our oath of office and our responsibility to enhance our city's image. For this reason, I will at this time, and am filing a formal complaint stating that I believe Councilperson Klein has, over her time on council, violated the standards, norms, and conduct established by this council. I do so knowing the gravity of my complaint and following the rules of procedure 1-4C-3 dealing with censure as set out in ordinance number 5585, approved by council on December 14th, 2020. Accordingly, I make the following allegations, which I'm required to do by our rules of procedure as evidence of Councilperson Klein's continuing behavior that has damaged the reputation, image, and interests of our city. I will list nine, but I reserve the right to add more, and I will hand this document to the mayor pro tem per language dealing with censure in Article C, Rules of Procedure. And I am going to list these because I don't want anybody out in that audience to say that I'm handing something off, and it's behind closed doors, and decisions are made. I want you to know what my complaints entail. That's why I've asked for the time. And I'm doing so in public. Number one, in July of 2018, Councilperson Clyde made comments in a public setting to the effect, quotes, "Oh, if I was in a dark room with Morrissey and I had a knife", quotes. This was overheard by persons attending that public event and has no place for comments by any elected official. Number two, she made public, public comments insinuating that city leaders were hiding or covering up her, quotes, manufactured fact that the city was dumping raw sewage into the river, bringing EPA into Waterloo, and EPA found that accusation untrue. Because of this, Councilperson Clyde and all of council were visited by our insurance carrier regarding making damaging statements and the liability associated with it, both personally and to the city. False accusations damage our city's interests, both economically and image-wise, a violation of our elected duty. Number three, looking into the camera, she repeatedly distorted and was untruthful about her past actions and doing so for her own political gain personally. Please check YouTube, if you don't believe me, on these things. The comment that she made was that I always support the police. Well, look it over, you're going to find out several areas where that, in fact, is not true, and in fact, was called on that. Number four, on the 1024 KWWL Steele report, she accused the rebrand committee of being rigged, again misleading the public on the facts through innuendo and false information, thereby damaging our image. The rebrand committee was made up of twelve voting members, with six supporting the old patch, and co-chaired by Major Joe Leibold, who did a marvelous job, and six seeking a change of varying degrees, co-chaired by Tavis Hall. Each co-chair selected five, with both chairs aware of everybody selected on either side. This occurred in the fall of 2020, with all subsequent meetings being recorded. The final design, in fact, came from the Waterloo Police Protective Association, and the council approved what the Waterloo Police Protective Association design had submitted, and we did that on May 17th of this year. Number five, she has accused one of our two- Number five, she has accused one of our two African-American developers of fooling the city council regarding his development agreement with the city, not only regarding his extension request, but even making insinuations about his payment from the city. She's insinuated our CFO was hiding or sneaking his payment between smaller items. It was not. It was where it should have been because they're listed in alphabetical order. She proudly proclaims that her investigative work located this, when in fact, another councilperson had done that and questioned it. Both of these were shown to be statements that were misleading and devoid of any truth-seeking. Tarnishing the name of any developer risks the potential for other developers to move or develop within our city. That runs totally contrary to what we as city elected officials are charged with doing. That violates our policy of enhancing our city's image to attract economic development, create additional revenue, and lower taxes. This developer has fortunately stayed with his agreement and not been driven away by her accusations and insinuations. Number six, making statements accusing the mayor and the human resources director of improprieties in business dealings, when in fact, she hadn't checked, and if she would have, she would have discovered there was no illegality, no conflict.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Morrissey.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
This has got to be a political stump, and I asked you if you would stop that, and you are not doing it. Point of order is that you are stumping and I'm leaving.
So, Mr. Dreyer, he was elected, and the majority of people that have gotten up and spoken over the last several weeks, including you, have criticized me, and I didn't say...
It's not a political situation, you're letting it happen.
So...
It's the night before voting, but let's stop this.
So...
That's not right.
So, you are out of order. The chair does not recognize you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just want you to know, this is not political. This is something that we as council people are charged with doing if we find violations that are included in our rules of procedure, which allows for this action to take place. It's not political. November 1st is today, and I've got about two months, and I want to see this through to the end. And according to the processing, it can happen. I can't help it, Mr. Mayor, if I've been given fuel for fodder. That's just the way it happened.
All right, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if these things have been checked, it would have been discovered that there was no illegality, no conflict, and the matter was vetted. Again, the mayor is African-American, as is the city human resources director. This succeeded in getting her press, as she labeled it Ice Cream Gate, and other making of accusations before getting the facts. Her accusations' result is a lowering of our city's image. Number seven, Councilperson Klein in September chose to accuse the mayor of having a tradition, and I, these are quotes, "tradition of doing things behind closed doors," creating this latest stunt, as she referred to it, reaffirming no interest in working with the city council or our police officers, rather he only cares about his handpicked chief. These statements were made after her suggested PAC, the one which she, I believe, originated, said the mayor's fun run for kids had T-shirts with Chief Joel Fitzgerald's signature above the safety director title. This was on the back of the T-shirt next to the mayor's. She only had to do a little homework to find out that Leisure Services printed the T-shirts for our schoolchildren, but it aired in not changing the title. The Director of Leisure Services has graciously accepted full responsibility for that oversight. Waterloo School District even responded as to how the mayor's fun run was an event for kids. Again, she finds a way to embarrass and harm our city's image by her unchecked, unfounded, and false claims. Again, no apology, no retraction from her or the PAC. Number eight, unbelievably, in another public meeting, Councilperson Klein remarked that before she voted on an issue, she looked into the audience to certain individuals as to how she should vote. A nod, a thumbs up, thumbs down. This shows nothing but disregard for our legislative purpose, for our duty to prepare prior to voting on issues, for our knowledge and respect for the issues we are expected to decide in the best interest of all in our community, not just a handful that are in the council chamber room. We are to make decisions for all the people of Waterloo. Her admission here is an abdication of her sworn oath to the citizens of Waterloo. And finally, I bring to this complaint my belief that Councilperson Klein has, whether by commission or omission, jeopardized the venue for a criminal trial by comments from her and even an ad from her PAC, a PAC which was her idea. I want the audience to know that I worked 30 years investigating child abuse, all forms of child abuse. I abhor and I condemn child abuse in its totality. Bringing child abuse out in or from the shadows can mean criminal prosecution through our criminal justice system as laid out in our constitution. But the Bill of Rights does include the right to a trial by an impartial jury where the alleged criminal behavior occurred. But here, what we have, Councilperson Klein's initiated PAC being the judge and jury. And I'll show you something here, and I think this was alluded to earlier. What we have here is a mailer that was sent out to people, and it reads, "Waterloo Can't Take More of Mayor Hart's Bad Judgment. We Don't Need a Mayor Who Appoints Sexual Predators to Police Advisory Boards." The problem with this is that this person who is charged has not had a trial by jury. And what is being done is setting in motion that the people in our community already have judged him. This PAC has judged him guilty and are calling him a sexual predator. All it would have taken was a check of the sexual abuse registry to find out that this person was not on that, but yet this was allowed to be put out there to the public. Shameful, disgusting. The act, if it is found to have occurred, is shameful and disgusting, but our constitution guarantees a defendant a right to a trial by jury, and that has not been done by this, by this. This has not been condemned by Councilwoman Klein, nor asked to be retracted, nor repudiated by this PAC or by her. That's shameful. That's disgusting, and this is what should happen to it. And what I want to do is I want to say that, I'm not saying that she made this, but what did happen was the PAC that did this contains former law enforcement people who know the rule of law, but yet put this out there as though it's truthful, and it is not yet truthful as for the reasons that I mentioned. Councilperson Klein basically does the same thing. When on her 102421 KWL Steele report, she drew all to embrace the same by accusing the mayor of appointing a felon to the rebranding committee right after she had mentioned a sexual abuse arrest by a member of that committee. She has neither condemned, as I said, the mailer, nor asked for retraction. The above, that shows her violation of her oath of office to uphold our constitution, to honor the rule of law, and to not bring harm to our city's image or city's reputation. And finally, furthermore, what also is included in this is that she's insinuated a total falsehood. The rebrand committee members were chosen by the co-chairs in the fall of 2020. This sexual offense arrest was made in the fall, as a matter of fact, what, a couple weeks ago, of 2021. Those rebrand committee members included five current or retired police officers. Those 10 persons were vetted by the co-chairs and then given to the mayor as per the council resolution. Her insinuations regarding the mayor's appointment are not factual, and Councilperson Klein knew it. Again, this speaks to her honesty, due diligence, excuse me, in truth gathering and actions violating council members of decorum. Now, one final thing that I want to do is just show you something that, to me, speaks to the gravity of this and the racism that is involved in a couple of these things. First of all, I will stand so I can show you this. If anybody was, is as old as I am, you're around in 1988 when a certain party put this ad out, the Willie Horton ad. And this is from the media that says that George H.W. Bush's Willie Horton ad will always be the reference point for dog-whistled racism. Now I want to show you this, and I want to show you this. Both of these are dog whistles for racism. They need to be absolutely repudiated by Councilwoman Klein, by the PAC that produced them, and they need to be put in the trashy of history. And with those comments, what I will be doing is, per our rules of procedure, I will be passing this information to the mayor pro tem, because I cannot give it to the mayor, because I've mentioned his name in here, and I want this to be neutral. So, I've been giving it to the mayor pro tem, and I'm asking the mayor pro tem, according to our rules of procedure, what happens is there to be a maximum of 30 days to do an investigation by either the police chief, by the human resources director, or by the city attorney. Well, I'm not going to ask the mayor pro tem to give it to either the chief of police or to the human resources director, because I also mentioned them. So, the process at that point in time is to have an investigation take place within those 30 days, a report be submitted back to the council as to whether there is any finding that the allegations that I list here, unless others might come forward... Oh, sorry. Did everybody hear that, or do I need to repeat that? Okay, and then if the city attorney is the one that gets this, then we'll get a report back, and if a motion for a resolution of censure is there, then it proceeds to council within 14 days, and we will then have it as part of a resolution, and we will vote on it. If it is found to not contain allegations that meets the requirements, then it will be negated, and that report will come to us. And that is the extent of my comments, and thank you for your time.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor. I will...
Please, no addresses from outside.
I will, as mayor pro tem, accept these allegations and refer it to the city attorney for investigation. That's it.
Counsel.
I'm done. Make a motion to close public comments, receive, and place on file all comments.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with several changes. To remove 1B1D and to remove 1B4, both from the consent agenda for further discussion, and add to 1A1 bills payment the following amounts. For October 26, 2021, bill payment in the amount of $3,284,553.80. And for November 1, 2021, bill payment in the amount of $1,874,334.22. Move to receive, approve, and place on file.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, we also had item 1A7 as well.
I had a question on that, though, since Mr. Dreyer requested it, and then he's left. Do we need to open that up for discussion, because it was for his questions?
And it's, actually, it's a hearing, too, so...
Yeah.
So, just leave it as I moved, as I amended?
If...
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask if it'd be included, being that he had requested that, and he is a part of, has been a part of the meeting, even though he left already. I think we should at least open it up.
Okay.
And then maybe afterwards, Noel can reach out to him for that particular question to see what his thoughts are, so...
Well, then let me add to my amendment that we remove 1A7 from the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. So, to all the other items, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution set in date of public hearing as November 15, 2021 to authorize the sale and conveyance of property located northeast of the Levercy Road and Lake Street intersection to, it's at Zideco Investments LLC for CPM plant in the amount of $1,170,000. Approve, it says approve a development agreement including grant funds, option for acquisition of land, and tax rebate for 15 years at 50%, minimum assessment agreement at $8 million for the development of 170,000 square foot building, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Your motion has been made with the second. I know you'll follow up with Mr. Dreyer. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion approving a travel request for the Waterloo Police Department staff civilian and sworn to Waterloo, Iowa on December 8, 14, and 20, 2021 for training entitled "The Journey, The Joy, and the Job of Racial Justice" in the amount not to exceed $15,000.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Boson?
Thank you, sir. And the reason I asked to have this pulled off is, and I'll get into that, just for further discussion, is the first thing I want to say is, it has nothing to do with the fact that it's diversity training. I am 100% in favor of diversity training for all members of employees of the city of Waterloo, not just the police department, and I question anybody that would think any of the seven of us sitting at this council table would have any problem approving diversity training. All I'm asking, because I've attended Mr. Cicero's programs in the past, all I would like to do is just have a brief overview. I know that there's a partial overview in here of what we're going to be receiving All I'm asking, because I've attended Mr. Cicero's programs in the past, all I would like to do is just have a brief overview. I know that there's a partial overview in here of what we're going to be receiving for this class because it's a very expensive class. It's, you know, it's $1,250 an instructor hour, which is pretty pricey, but like I say, I have attended his classes when I worked for the police department. So I would like just to have a brief overview so that the people out in the public can see what we're offering to our police officers as a type of diversity training. And the last thing I'd like to ask about is that I would like to just request that, and this will pass, that is it possible for council people to attend one of these training sessions if we hold it underneath the maximum amount allowed so that we could attend this diversity training, number one? And number two, that we would get an idea of the quality of the classes that we're receiving so that in the future we can help support and push these types of programs forward.
All right, Chief. Overview of the training, also talk about how it's paid and then potential for council that may want to attend.
Dr. Joel Fitzgerald, chief of police here in the city of Waterloo. I think the best way to give you an overview is to give you page five that's already in the documentation that you received. It's an understanding of your needs and it says Waterloo Police Department has engaged numerous efforts in diversity training, education and professional development realm and understands it must continually work on these efforts and commitment. Officers and civilian employees need to connect and engage effectively and respectfully as well as safely with the diverse communities of Waterloo, Iowa. It's clear when surfing through social media of Waterloo, the Waterloo Police Department website, as well as firsthand accounts from residents of Waterloo that there are pressing community issues that need to be addressed and relationships that need to be established, built, recovered and maintained. Waterloo is facing some of the same challenges, Black Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter and All Lives Matter, that are pervasive across this nation at this point in our time and in our collective history. Our efforts to value diversity, create inclusion and build cultural competence need to be both positive and proactive. So I do believe for purposes of the greater good and the audience here that an explanation of the training outside of what was listed here is needed and that is that we are continually trying to develop ourselves as individuals who provide service to everyone, as guardians in the community and reverse the mentality that we once had that we were warriors. There's a time for being a warrior, but 99% of our time encompasses being guardians in the community, being of service to you and being people that treat others with dignity and respect. I found that our officers have been treating people with dignity and respect and it's reflected in our internal affairs investigations. However, one thing that I promised during the time that I met folks in the city for the very first time, which was the day before I started work out in Lincoln Park, was that we would have diversity training and this is the second department-wide diversity training that we've offered our employees. And to answer your question, I would love it if someone from council or if council members wanted to attend the training as well. The person who's providing the training and the company that's providing the training has been here before, as you stated, and we're given great reviews from our officers from top to bottom in the agency. So I do believe, just, I have not sat through one of his actual facilitated seminars on racial equity or diversity, but everything that I heard was that this person was top notch and echoes the same sentiment that you echoed and that was that everyone gained great value out of having the training. So council members, I would say that I'm sure we could work something out to get you in the training. The cost of the training is very competitive. It costs a little more, but then the focus of racial diversity training across the United States has been huge, so the demand is huge. So when demand is huge, we know that prices go up some. But I believe it's something well worth. Our efforts and our, you know, the monies that we've had donated to this department to engage in this training have been huge and made this happen. This is not money that's coming out of our budget per se, it is money that it's been donated to the city and in particular to our police department for this type of training.
No, and I appreciate that, sir. And I, on the, that the public knows that this isn't coming out of your training budget, that this is something that the citizens of Waterloo have asked for and donated to. And the other thing is, is that I know there's a cap per class and do we just send an email to, who would we send an email to and on a particular date? Because I know the class is a flat fee, so I don't think if we add another person, it's going to cost us more money as long as we keep under the cap. Would we send it to you? Would we send it to Lieutenant?
I would suggest sending it to me. I'll work it out with McLoughlin and work it out with the provider. I'm sure that they would be more than honored to have city council people sitting in that class and could probably derive some kind of, you know, advertisement of their services by having council members in the class. I think it's a win-win for everyone.
I appreciate that, sir. And I can't imagine that there wouldn't be another council person or two that would like to attend also. So thank you.
But I would, one thing I would probably do is discuss it with, first, we definitely have to give a shout out to Tom Pennaluna at CBE for taking on the cause of helping us raise some dollars to be able to give additional training in social justice and equity training for our police department. It's easy to sit and complain about what's not happening, but it's another thing to put their money where their mouth is and him engaging with the business community and understanding the value of workshops and programs that are able to bridge our law enforcement with all parts of our community. And so we had Mr. Cicero here in 2016 and then back again in 2017. And I've heard incredible, incredible reviews from those within the department. And so he already has a pre-existing relationship. And so some of those difficult conversations, courageous conversations, there's already a trust relationship built up, so I don't expect anything less but incredible work. And, you know, these are the things that aren't often mentioned about what our department is doing, so looking very forward to it. So these dollars will come from, from those grant dollars that have been awarded to us as well. And, you know, when we take a look over the past year and the challenges that we've had, there's no better time right now to have this type of training and program and this level of engagement to move this community forward. So this is the right time and very fortunate to have these dollars to be able to do it. So thank you, Chief. Thank you so much for the presentation or questions as well.
And I thank you, sir, because I really believe the public really needs to know that the direction the department's going and how the city is actually, the city is actually investing in our department. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions?
We could actually put something on the website that sort of reflects what the training is, maybe on our splash page by tomorrow, I could have it up and, you know, the citizens out there who want to get more information on it, we'll put it on our Facebook, we'll put it on the splash page and they can page through it and look through the entire document.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion approving change order number 22 with Cardinal Construction Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa for net increase of $5,803 in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center addition and renovation project and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, sir.
And the only reason I brought this back to council and Mr. Dryer asked for this to ask me if it was going to be brought before the council also, is that two weeks ago, we approved $6,130 for basically conduit for video signs. And today we're approving $5,803 for conduit for video signs. So I just wanted an explanation so that the public knows that we're not getting double dipped, we're not paying for something twice and why we're getting these change orders if Noel could, or someone couldn't.
Mr. Anderson. You have another additional question?
I have another, we'll wait till he's done.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
Because he, you know, can remember two things that.
Yep.
Green Bay won, so he's happy.
Take it one at a time, yeah. Noel Anderson, committee planning and development director. So I believe, I'll go back and check the records as well. I believe last week was more about the design to actually get the conduit over there with the architects. Since it is a commercial building, we will have to have the architect design it. I mean, this will actually be the physical construction of the conduit.
So the design costs more than the construction?
The design will cover a lot more than just the conduit as well, but Michelle may know more than I do because she's getting up.
It just says cost to, it just says cost to add conduit. It doesn't say design in either one of these.
No, Michelle Whedon, our chief financial officer, this one Noel might not have been included in. We're trying to work on appropriate signage for the convention center. And so the first sign we worked on is a large video board that we hope to locate, and this is all dependent on getting our funding in order, at the corner of Jefferson and West Forest Street. We also, and that will face, you'll be able to see it hopefully from West Fourth and primarily from Jefferson in that corner. We also want to put what I'm going to call a ribbon sign, which is narrower, and this will be at the commercial and West Forest Street. So now you're at another corner so that you can see it from several directions. And just the way that the designs were being done and the timing of construction, they wanted to move ahead with the first one at the last meeting, but they didn't have the cost ready for the ribbon sign yet. So the, the change order at the last meeting or previous time was for the conduit for the Jefferson Street side and this one is for the commercial street side.
All right.
Thank you, Michelle.
We good?
Oh, I'm good.
Mrs. Jewen.
I just want to bring everyone's attention to the fact that we have pretty consistently brought up issues on our agenda where there's an increase. And people from the audience have said, well, you're always increasing. I just want to bring everyone's attention to the fact that there are four items on the agenda that are decreases. So it doesn't always go up. It often goes down and we need to keep that in mind. In this case, the four that had decreases were in excess of $40,000, whereas the one increase was only $5,000. So please keep that in mind as we request information about the increases. Please, let's also put in the fact that we do have decreases as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, but.
22.
Yeah, those are increases. 22 change orders.
Yeah, and it probably won't be the last ones either as we get into, how old is the convention center building?
I couldn't tell you. I'm in the 70s.
72.
50. Yeah, so.
So 40.
Yeah, there's no telling what you.
Pat, you have to know the convention center was, not you.
That was when it was built.
He's not being honest with you.
Yeah, before.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so about that, we, but yeah, it probably won't be the last one. There's no telling what's behind the walls, but I think, has all the council taken a tour?
Yeah.
You've been in there though, right?
Yeah.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right.
So they could have actually rejected the rejection and say, let's spend $52,000 and get these abated. But how long before this comes back to the council?
With the top bidder dropping out, I think the best we could have done was keep his bond and then he just would have said he wasn't going to do it. So I don't think we had much choice if we wanted to try to get a lower amount. Hopefully we'll come back to council next month.
Okay, all right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing on the asbestos abatement services contract AB-2021-11-05P for properties located at 928 Mulberry Street, 1526 East Fourth Street, 1527 East Fourth Street, 114 East 10th Street and 105 East 11th Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to asbestos services for the following, for those properties? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. No comments on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plan specification form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was $15,000. First bidder was All-Star Environmental of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $52,000. Second bidder was Site Services of Algonah, Iowa. They did not provide bid security. Their bid amount was $110,731. Third bidder was Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $121,319. Our fourth bidder was Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $191,039. And our final bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $134,000.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution that rejects all these bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. And Noel, what happened?
It was the understatement of the week.
Yeah.
Noel Anderson, committee planning and development director. Hopefully I'm correct on this one. The first bidder apparently had some calculation errors as to how the Black Hawk County waste dump would take the materials, so he's pulling out of the bid. The second bidder did not have a bid bond, so we would like to just basically reevaluate these properties, look at where the bids were at in terms of quantities and then just rebid it back out since we've already lost two of the top, the two lowest bidders are out.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask Noel a question. Noel, okay, so we have these properties that have been on and they've been part of dilapidated housing and they've got to this point where we're doing this. Is there something that's going to stop this because of the bid process or what?
No, we'll rebid them back out, so it'll just slow us down a little bit, but we'll get back to the process and, like I said, evaluate what quantities they were looking at and the prices and come back with a new bid package.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. So they could have actually rejected the rejection and say, let's spend $52,000 and get these abated. But how long before this comes back to the council?
With the top bidder dropping out, I think the best we could have done was keep his bond and then he just would have said he wasn't going to do it. So I don't think we had much choice if we wanted to try to get a lower amount. Hopefully we'll come back to council next month. Hopefully, we'll come back to council next month.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding bid
Okay, all right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
to Layman Trucking and Excavating Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof a publication of notice of public
dollars, and approving the contract and certificate of insurance in conjunction with
hearing, and that's for demolition services contract D dash twenty-twenty-one dash eleven
the demolition and site clearance services contract D dash twenty-twenty-one dash eleven
dash zero-three P for properties located at ten-twenty-seven Sycamore Street, three-twenty-five
dash zero-three P for properties located at ten-twenty-seven Sycamore Street, three-twenty-five
West Thirteenth Street, and seven-forty-two Grant Avenue.
West Thirteenth Street, and seven-forty-two Grant Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
city clerk to execute said document.
Madam Clerk, any comments on file?
Second.
No comments.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this particular item on Just wanted to say, I don't know if I've seen bids this far off. the agenda? Going a second time.
There's an explanation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Mr. Anderson. Motion's been made with the second.
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So we do have a new staff person in charge of demolitions, and quite honestly, he's
Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
probably just not very good at estimating it, so.
Throw him under the bus.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
I won't name him, but he's watching in Hillgroo.
Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen.
Don't you approve it, though?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
It comes to you.
Yes.
And then the bad part is, you approve it, and then I'm the mayor, so ultimately, it's my fault. All right. So it's my fault, actually.
I think there's some tire treads on this.
Right, all right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof a publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, Eleventh Street, BRM dash CHBP dash eight-one-five-five parentheses seven-seven-zero dash NB dash zero-seven, and Parkin Avenue Bridge, BRM CHBP dash eight-one-five-five parentheses seven-seven-one dash NB dash zero-seven, replacements, contract one-zero-one-three.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to replacements for bridges? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. So Jamie, would you like to give an explanation of why we're just closing the hearing and done after that point?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Per the DOT regulations, we have to have a, have a public hearing on it. We found out the results of the bids last Thursday, so that would have been after I could have got it on for approving contracts and bonds and things like that for this particular council. So we'll be back in two weeks for that. Just a note to council, the estimate was nineteen-point-two million for both bridges, and the bid came in at twenty-point-six million, so it's a little bit high, not surprising with inflation and lack of material resources and things like that, so. But we'll be coming back in another two weeks for, for, to approve the contracts and bonds with the DOT.
And for those that don't know, Park Avenue Bridge and the Eleventh Street Bridge will be replaced, so that's a good sign if you've driven over Park Avenue in a, in a while, so that is.
What he's saying.
He said, he said, not percentage-wise. Doesn't, but you and Jamie, but, but you and Jamie are also in the same department, so once again, and then once again, it's me. Madam Clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed. Could someone take five, six, and seven?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number five is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Magellan Advisors LLC for the design, engineering, and permitting of a fiber optic network to the home in the amount of two-million-four-hundred-forty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number six is a resolution approving an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for an Iowa's Clean Air Attainment Program parentheses ICAAP parentheses Federal Aid Swap Project in conjunction with the US sixty-three Logan Avenue Adaptive Traffic Systems from Congress Street to Donald Street, project number ICAAP dash SWAP dash eight-one-five-five parentheses seven-eight-one parentheses dash SH dash zero-seven, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And resolution number seven is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand dollars for an engineering and construction services in conjunction with the US Highway Sixty-three South Interceptor Sewer Upgrade Phase One Project Supplemental Agreement Number Two, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions from our audience, anyone? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, Ms. Gable.
Sherri Gable, fifty-one eighteen South Fork Lane. What is the reference to the home? What does that mean?
Who's our tech expert? But it'll be, so the first phase of the portions of the fiber, it was from just the backbone connecting all of city services. The next phase, and this portion, would take a look at the design that actually connects the fiber to the premises or to the home. So it will.
What is the home?
Your house.
Your house.
And our dress.
Your address.
Residential.
All, all houses. All houses, businesses.
So it's not the home, then? It's all houses, all homes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think Mr. Morrissey indicated he had a couple of questions on number five, if I'm not mistaken, earlier.
Yes, I did, but I don't know if the audience has done.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item? So we're just talking about just the design and what that would potentially look like.
Magellan still on the line?
I mean, do you want an update from Magellan, or?
No, I didn't know if he wanted to see if he was still available to answer Pat's question.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll listen to Mr. Morrissey's question, and then we'll see if Courtney has any, from Magellan, any comments, but we're just talking about what a design would look like at this point.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I had a person contact me today specifically about this, and a couple of things, and first of all is, I mean, two and a half million dollars is a lot of money, and there is that lingering question about how that's going to be paid. Do we got grants? Do we got private individuals? Who do we got involved with the payment of this? The second thing is that if we're discussing something like this in a work session, it's ordinary protocol not to have it brought to the council at that same meeting, and there's a question as to why that is occurring in this particular case. I had answered it to the best of my ability, but you know, I'm a guy that forgot that there were stairways leading up to the grout in Ward Three, so maybe.
Don't forget pocket park.
And, yeah, pocket park, too, so.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. So you have two questions. One is how we're paying for it. We, as was included in the council materials, we plan to use funds from the Federal American Rescue Plan for it, and your second question was, why is the vote on tonight? We are asking for it tonight so that Magellan can, can keep moving. Part of this is actually, they are physically having to walk the neighborhoods to figure out where to hook these up at. They can't do that once the weather turns and it's winter, so we really just want to keep this going. You certainly can delay it if, you know, if you're not comfortable approving it tonight, it will just slow the whole process down.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes, I just want to say how excited I am to see anything that advances our whole telecommunication broadband. I've been working on this. I was on the committee to create a municipal utility back in two thousand and five, and we passed it. We were so excited, we passed it, and then nothing happened. And so it's, has just sat gathering dust for sixteen years. So this is something that our city needs so desperately. We've lost businesses because we didn't have the broadband available that we needed, and I think it'd be a real recruiting tool. So I'm excited to have it on there and support it as enthusiastically as I possibly can.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bosin.
Yeah, real quickly, I, I want to echo some of those comments, too, because we're going to invest roughly two-point-five million dollars in, in the design, the complete design. We've got other money invested with the backbone, but for this, for this fiber to home, but we are going to need the public support, because once we get this design done, and, and we get the design, we get our engineering information, we get our, our materials and dollars and cents, we need public support to, to, to support this project. If we want to be competitive in, in bringing businesses and even bringing people to live in this community, we have to have a good fiber backbone, and, and we're making this commitment to you today with this design, and, and we are going to be asking for your commitment when this project comes to fruition with the information that Magellan gives us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
This is, is one of those things that I am incredibly excited to vote for. The future is built on today, and, and this particular piece, I believe firmly is building a future in which Waterloo is more competitive with our sister cities in the state, in the region, and in the nation. This will be good for businesses. This will be good for people. We have all seen the importance of accessibility over the last year, given the COVID-nineteen pandemic. It is incredibly important for us to live, work, and thrive, and so I am incredibly excited for this vote and to get this project going, and I echo my colleagues that we're going to need your help as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank the, the members of the committee who worked with Magellan and to bring this about. I think it's a long time coming, and unfortunately, we've been in, seen a lot of things, as Ms. Jewen said, that she's been working on this for, since two thousand and five, and so this is one of those things where, you know, if we want to leap forward and we want to, to have all these things that people consistently talk about, we have, have to have people who are bold enough to be able to make that step, and I thank Councilman Bosin for stating publicly, I mean, we're, we're going to need the public support. This is not going to be an inexpensive project, and we're, but if, if you want things to change, we're, we're going to certainly need this opportunity with everything. So thank you to the members of the committee that are, are here and online, and, and all the work that we've been able to have.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, final comment, and that is that to the people of Waterloo, to the taxpayers of Waterloo, this is an example of what our money, our taxes go to to support, and you don't grow a community by cutting, you grow a community by investing. And what we as taxpayers will be doing is investing in something that is so long overdue and will be, I believe, so appreciated by the young people and even us old people into the future, even though we may find it difficult to navigate it. So I, I appreciate this, and I fully support it, and Jonathan, thank you for spurring me into self-degregating.
Just for clarification, right now, this particular payment that we're talking about is not taxes. This is the American Rescue Plan, which is water, wastewater broadband, so that's, I just need to get clarification.
But, but Mr. Mayor, in the long run, we have property taxes, we have state taxes, and we have federal taxes.
Mr. Morrissey, thank you, for real.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We, we, right now, this right here, and I understand what you're saying, but can we, we can vote?
Can we vote?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Eight, nine, ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a crest from Matthew Frost for an appeal of the driveway policy prohibiting a second driveway approach on a corner lot located at twelve-hundred Byron Avenue. Number nine is adopting a resolution authorizing assignment of rebates to LMB LLC in conjunction with a development agreement with BCS Properties LLC, originally approved on November thirteenth, twenty-seventeen, for property generally located at and adjoining to eighteen-sixty-six West Ridge Ray Avenue. And number ten is adopting a resolution approving the assignment of rebates to Cedar River Trails Apartments LLC in conjunction with a development agreement with Dolly James LLC, originally approved on January thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, for property located at eight-twenty through nine-fourteen Sycamore Street.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Are there any comments from anyone in the audience on these three items? Counsel?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, sir, please come forward.
Hi, Matthew Frost. I reside at twelve-hundred Byron Avenue. Let me pull up some points I had here. Clearly, the, the intentions I had as far as the driveway were, they were good. I just wanted to improve my house and make it more accessible, and it was a pre-existing driveway from long before, from what I, from what I've heard, long before I even moved in there ten years ago, and I understand the proper permits were not pulled, and that I would be more than willing to compensate for, and it was not poured properly either, and that would be addressed, no problem. I think it is more safe for it to be going through because it's a long, narrow driveway to back out onto, and it's backing onto the more busy street, which I believe is actually an ordinance that if you live on a corner lot, your driveway is supposed to go to the least busy street, which this is just how the, the house was when I moved in. I assume it's how it was when it was built, and it's onto the side street, Hoover. It's not, there's no curbs or drainage system on that street, and had there been curbs
Let me pull up some points I had here. Clearly, the, the intentions I had as far as the driveway were, they were good. I just wanted to improve my house and make it more accessible. And it was a pre-existing driveway from long before, from what I, from what I've heard, long before I even moved in there ten years ago. And I understand the proper permits were not pulled. And that I would be more than willing to compensate for. And it was not poured properly either. And that would be addressed, no problem. I think it is more safe for it to be going through because it's a long, narrow driveway to back out onto, and it's backing onto the more busy street, which I believe is actually an ordinance that if you live on a corner lot, your driveway is supposed to go to the least busy street. Which this is just how the, the house was when I moved in. I assume it's how it was when it was built. And it's on to the side street, the Hoover. It's not, there's no curbs or drainage system on that street. And had there been curbs, that, that driveway would have never existed there. Because I, it started with people just driving through, you can tell. And then eventually people put gravel down. And I just thought, since it was there already, if I paved it, if I put concrete down, it would increase the aesthetic value, property value, make the neighborhood in general look better. And yeah, I thought it would be, create extra parking for visitors that I have. So there aren't more people parked on Byron, which is always loaded with cars parked. And yeah, I think, I think that's all I got.
Well, you can stick around just in case counsel has any questions. Are you together or?
Yeah, my name is Sarah Raphael. I live at seven oh two Real Street. We're actually the concrete company that poured the driveway. When we originally went to the property, there was already an existing driveway there. It was made out of gravel at that time. So we turned it into a concrete driveway. We were up, or we were let known after the fact that we poured the driveway that unfortunately it was not approved by the city to have two entryways into any one property. We were not aware of that, and I apologize. We are a new company. We just opened it actually this year. So we're kind of learning as we go and, and whatnot. And I've also talked to Ben, the inspector, and he has let me know what needs to be done if it is approved to stay, how to bring it up to code. And again, we will also pay for the proper permits and anything that we need to pay for above and beyond what we already have paid for to get it able to, to stay and to get it up to code.
All right, all right. Thank you. Anyone else with comments? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you, sir. So Mr. Frost resides in, in my ward, so I, I didn't get a chance to speak with him, but I did go to the house and park and kind of just watch the traffic. He's just a couple of blocks away from, from Ninth Street, and we all know how busy Ninth Street can get and Byron to cut over there. I know, and watched the October twelfth planning and the P P Z meeting as well, in which the, that was passed unanimously there despite some staff recommendations not to, to do that because remember Sue Flynn grew up in that area and recalls that, that driveway being there, that gravel driveway, noticing the traffic as well and everything, you know, I, I'm in support of this. You know, if you have people parking across the way from you, it can get difficult to, to, to back out. And I applaud Mr. Frost for working on improving his property, because looking at pictures from it before, it was clear that the concrete was pretty beat up. And so thank you for doing that. We always want homeowners who want to make their properties look appropriate, and I think he's trying to do that. It is unfortunate that we are sitting, sorry, I'm looking at a picture of it right now. So as we're, as we're looking at it, I think that it's, 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 the Hoover Street is a better situation for him. And not that we, I think one of the words that was used was precedent setting, and I'm not sure that this is going to be a precedent setting event per se, but we want to make sure that our companies are pulling out the proper permits as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boson.
Thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Foyce's comments, and I've had some correspondence on this also. And there'll be permits taken out. There'll be corrections made, so it's, everything is up to code, and that was already offered by, by our contractors. I don't think we're setting a precedence. And I fully support Mr. Frost and his appeal to, to create that other, other drive. Just looking at it, aesthetically, it's, it's so clean. And I'm happy to support this resolution.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, any, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes. All right, thank you. Eleven and twelve.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with B P C Properties LLC in the amount of three thousand four hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents in conjunction with reconstruction of the Park Avenue Bridge located at one oh two East Park Avenue and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo for the final plot of Waterloo Air and Rail Park Second Edition, a five-lot commercial industrial subdivision located east of twenty-five-ten Levercy Road, including a stormwater maintenance agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these two particular items on the agenda? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I can't pass up the chance to again ask that when Park Avenue Bridge is replaced, rebuilt, that Park Avenue itself be reconstructed. The bridge will close that entire roadway down, or it could. And especially with the reconstruction of Park Avenue, which is definitely in need of reconstruction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thirteen and fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the Main Street Iowa Program Agreement, number G three hundred dash M S I dash fifty between the Iowa Economic Development Authority, or I E D A, the City of Waterloo and Cedar Skyline Corporation, doing business as Main Street Waterloo for the purpose of continuing the Main Street program in Waterloo for a period of twenty-four months, ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, approving a commitment to provide funding from downtown TIF and bond funds and hotel motel discretionary fund proceeds to the Main Street Waterloo program and committing to appoint a city official to represent the city on the local Main Street Governing Board of Directors, and that the city of Main Street Waterloo will continue to follow the Main Street approach as developed by Main Street America and espoused by Main Street Iowa and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number fourteen is a resolution.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Okay. Number fourteen is a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo for an amendment to the deed of dedication for Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition to allow for stormwater from the First Edition to be collected in Waterloo Air and Rail Park Second Edition and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Now, second. The motion has appropriately been made with the second. Now, we have our Main Street Director in the audience. Jessica, did you have any comments about number thirteen?
Jessica Rucker, Director of Main Street Waterloo. This is an agreement and a ask for a resolution that we have to do every two years to keep, keep our accreditation and continue to be a Main Street community. You guys have passed this in the past, and we've already worked on our local agreement, so I'm hoping this will move forward. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel?
Has this been a two-year agreement before?
It was eighteen months and then a couple, I want to say in two thousand and nineteen, they switched it to twenty-four months to be annually or be on the calendar year.
So this is not reflecting any changes from the agreement that we passed previously?
No, no. There were no changes from the last one we did in two thousand and nineteen. It's just making sure that we're all still in agreement, that we want to work together.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Greider.
Mr. Mayor. So I just want to brag about how awesome Main Street Waterloo is. I know that you guys have put on fantastic events this year, just this weekend. I got to go down with my girls to downtown trick-or-treating, and they absolutely loved it. Thank you from all the parents for putting that on during the day, because I can tell you it's a lot better than doing it at night with children. But you guys have done amazing stuff, particularly this year. I know that it's been hard to get volunteers. I know that we're coming out of COVID. And I just want to applaud you and your organization for all the work that you have done over these last couple of years, making downtown a place to be in our city. So thank you very, very much.
Yay.
Yay.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number fourteen.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean fifteen, I'm sorry. If you want to read fourteen, that's fine, but number fifteen.
I'll go ahead and stick with fifteen, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make, or make a motion to receive filing, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Two Sidewalk Construction Inspections and Repair and Article A Inspection and Repair of Title Seven Public Ways and Property.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to sidewalk construction? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Boson.
I'd just like to point out that we're, we're changing our, by adopting this, we're changing our inspection schedule. So the people that we're getting inspected, I believe, once every ten years, we'll get it, if I, if I'm correct, every once every twelve years? Okay. So I mean, even have a little longer in between cycles that you're going to have to worry about your sidewalks. And it, they divide it up, so it's equal, more equal as far as number of sidewalk linear footage. And so this, this was a good change to our ordinance. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
How did I know that? Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I don't know if this is include my suggested amendment to include mudjacking as allowable if approved by the Engineering Department.
Okay, all right. We hear you loud and clear. So the counsel.
Yeah, I just wondering if it, if this does include that.
I don't, no. Well, Jamie, does this include mudjacking? Did we already vote for mudjacking or something before?
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer. No, it does not include mudjacking. If counsel remembers, about a year ago at this time, it was almost about exactly a year ago at this time. We had a work session on it. I believe Mr. Morrissey even brought a resolution to counsel, and it did not go anywhere. So no, it does not include mudjacking at this point.
So it's, uh, still there. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive filing, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number sixteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
I'd like to make a motion to receive filing, consider for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Section eleven Prohibited Acts and Conditions of Chapter Four Litter Control Title Four Public Health and Safety in enacting in lieu thereof a new Section eleven Prohibited Acts and Conditions of Chapter Four Litter Control Title Four Public Health and Safety.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Counsel, or anyone questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd just like to thank City Attorney Peterson for bringing this forward and putting this, what I hear from constituents, issue, making it stronger. And I'm sure it'll be appreciated by the property owners and even the renters and landlords in our city.
All right, all right. Acknowledge. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
And Mr. Boson.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive filing, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. Make sure you guys all get out there and vote.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye.